Good evening. This is Joseph Botash. I'd like to call to order December 3, 2024, Rhythm Select Board Meeting. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda, a president can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson here.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Affirmative.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington here.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Greginos.
Present.
Administrative Assistant, Executive Administrative Assistant Amanda Vasapolo.
Present.
And we have our Finance Director Mike King.
Present.
Also joining us is our Chief of Police, Bill McGrath. All right, let's jump in. Go to Tab One, Announcements. I don't see any. Oh, here they are. Nope.
Nope.
All right. Well, Bill, we should let them know that the Police Association, Rent the Police Association, is having their toy drive Saturday at the Public Safety Building from 9:00 AM to noon time. Kindly bring gifts wrapped. Are they unwrapped or wrapped, Bill?
Unwrapped.
Unwrapped gifts. And the only other announcement we have is to join the Select Board and members of the town as they light the menorah on December 28 at Achilles House at 6:00 PM. All right, so I had some announcements. Tab Two. This time the chair entertain a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes from November 19.
So moved.
Motion made by Select Board Member Anderson, seconded by Select Board Member Gallo. We'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
And Select Board Member Botash is a yes. It's five zero. All right. Next. Go to Tab Three. And now to turn the floor over to Bill McGrath, our Police Chief, giving us an update on Black Friday.
Good evening. I did forward a report to the board on Black Friday, which was pretty much all positive. Same crowd, volume wise, as we've had in previous years. Around 27,000 vehicles came in on Friday. They estimate about 78,000 to 80,000 people from those vehicles. Forty-two hundred parking spaces, so you do the math. It was the usual challenge to get everyone in and parked. Always astonishing to me is the fact that we don't get road rage incidents. We don't get a lot of complaints from the people who are stuck in the traffic. They anticipate it. They don't mind it. They go there for the festivity. That's what they tell us. All of the calls for public safety were handled pretty much by assigned detail officers and fire staff that were on scene. And I would say overall, it went very well. We had no problems in the neighborhoods that I'm aware of. We did have them blocked off with police details. And it just generally went smooth. Lucky for us, the the people that showed up did so over a span of time and just by coincidence, didn't come in all at once as they have in the past. So it's basically a good report. Any questions?
I'll go to the board. Chris, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Bill. Thanks for you and your team and Tony and his team for a successful Black Friday.
You're welcome.
Michelle.
No questions at this time. I'm just always amazed at the level of traffic that's coming in on that one day. So well done, Bill.
Well done to the guys, yeah.
Jim, any questions?
Yeah, just, uh, good job, Chief. You know, as you know, it takes a lot of resources and assets to get through that weekend. And you guys always do a great job of handling it. And my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Hit Bill.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you know, same exactly as the other Select Board members mentioned. A great job to the chief and the staff, the Fire Department and their staff. We appreciate all your hard efforts. Thank you.
All right. Well, the good thing is I didn't see anything on social media about that, about the traffic. So it looks like you did a great job, Chief. Thank you.
All to the staff. They did. They did a great job. Thank you.
All right. Don't go anywhere, because Tab Three. Tab Four. Is, uh, you again. So you've got a request for to memorialize late Deputy Chief George Labonte. Can you tell us about it?
Yes, it was an idea kind of born right around the time we lost the Deputy Chief. And I forget which, I think it was, might have been Officer Flynn was the first one that I heard come up with it. And of course, being the chief, I stole all the credit and decided to propose it. And that is the, uh, the road that leads from South Street out to Randall Road, the one that goes next to the Town Hall, where I'm sitting now, and passes in front of the Public Safety Building and then out onto Randall Road across from the plaza. My proposal is that we dedicate that as the Deputy George C. Labonte Way. And that we mark the road and have some kind of a dedication ceremony probably in the spring.
I personally think it's a great idea. My only question, would that change the address of the Public Safety Building?
I'm told that it would not. We would remain 79 in 89 South Street between the two, the two buildings, Town Hall and Public Safety. It would be kind of a secondary line that we would add to stationary if we wanted to and that kind of thing. So for instance, it would say Rhythm Police Department, 89 South Street. And that would have the, the name of the way under it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just add that I looked into that. That roadway is really just a, a long driveway. It's not a street. Per se, the, as, as the chief said, the frontage is, is Sun, is South Street. So Town Hall is 79 South Street, Public Safety Building is 89 South Street. That's just kind of like a roadway in. So it's not a, it's not a legal road. So no issue or concern there with what's being proposed.
All right. Michelle. Any questions?
No, I echo your comments. I think it's a, it would be a wonderful memorial and tribute to George. I think it's a great idea. No questions.
Jim.
I think it's a great idea. It's a great tribute for a great man. Thank you.
Chris.
Agreed. Definitely support this and looking forward to doing the ceremony in the spring for Deputy Chief Labonte and his family.
And Bill.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Chair. I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm just curious. Could we change the name of that road or make it a road and then change the address on the Public Safety Building and eliminate the 89 and 79 and 89 Maria South and make it, make it a road and have it be the Deputy Police Chief George C. Labonte Way? Would that be a possibility?
I think that's a question for Brian because I don't think that the width of the opening is wide enough to make it a road unless it could be one way, but maybe Brian.
Anything on that, Kevin?
Yeah, I'd have to look at that a little bit more. I think the, I think the way that was originally, I mean, the town didn't own that land that was purchased from the Renarys years ago and, you know, with the development. I have to look and see if it's a, if it's a one parcel. Because I think they're utilizing, I guess, at the frontage for the property as South Street. So it's kind of, it's kind of like 79 Rare, even though they did give it 89. Whether, you know, how we could make that a true roadway.
Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, you know, I'd have to connect because it's a, it's a one-way out, as you know, from the parking lot exit. So you know, it does connect down off Randall and come in and be like a one-way, I guess, sort of from that part. But we could, we could do some more digging on that as potential option. But I think the way it was, when it was developed and the way it was, I think it's just all because it's all under the ownership of the town. I think they just kind of created it as one parcel, which puts the frontage on South Street.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Ryan, do you have anything to add to that?
Not really. I would, I would side with Kevin. I'd have to look into it in terms of road width. A lot of good stuff. I think if it were to become a town road, it would certainly be a one-way. But that's just an educated guess without really looking into it.
All right. Any further discussion on the topic? Being none, the chair entertain a motion to approve the memorial for the late Deputy Police Chief George C. Labonte has presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectman Harrington. Do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Gallo.
Yes, Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
All right, that passed five zero. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much, and we'll get to work on it.
All right. Over to Tab Five. And has everyone had a chance to review the schedule proposed for 2025?
Yeah, I had no issues with that.
All right, Michelle.
I had no issues with that either.
Chris.
With Lance, looks good as long as they're all Tuesdays. And we have one meeting in, what is it, July and August? Sounds good.
And Brian, Bill.
They look good to me, Mr. Chair. I'll definitely be there for the first seven.
All right.
Mr. Mr. Chair, while we're on the topic of, of the schedule, I was going to bring this up. The town manager's report, I just, it might be, maybe we'll just have the conversation now if you're okay with that. Historically, in the past, we have not had the second meeting in December. We've kind of done, you know, some sort of board, board meet dinner or something like that. I didn't know if there was the will, particularly, so if, we also don't have a special town meeting annually, which in this case would be the night before our scheduled meeting. So I don't know what the board's wishes were for the, the second meeting in December. It sounded like, I discussed a little bit with Amanda today. I mentioned it to Mike. You know, I don't know that there's anything pressing that we have to have it, but we could also potentially deal with a couple of quick items before town meeting, as we'll have a posted meeting for that. But I just didn't know what the will of the, of the board was for that meeting.
That's what I was going to bring up.
Oh, okay.
We do have the meeting on the 16th. We should cancel the meeting on the 17th.
That's for this year?
That would be for this year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Did, did we decide on a date for the swearing in for the, for the new Deputy Chief?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up as well. That we could have that kind of be the, the meeting. Amanda, was that was that the, the day they were proposing and just have that as the swearing in?
Um, chief didn't say a specific day. He was just looking for in the next couple of weeks to see what day would work best for the board. I know he had said the next meeting, but it does look like he's off mute, so he may be able to speak on that.
Yeah, so I really only had to coordinate with Sergeant Cassidy. And he said any day is good for him. So that's why I threw it back to you guys. So whatever's convenient for you.
You want to do it 17th?
Seventeenth works for me and works for him.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Could be earlier too, if the board had availability. I mean, it doesn't have to be 6:30. I don't know what people's. I know they typically like to go out after. You have things, so I mean, I don't know.
I won't be going out after, but I will definitely be there.
I met his family and things like that.
I thought you were thinking of me.
You're invited.
I am family.
I'd propose an earlier time than 6:30 if we could do that. That would be great.
Will I do six?
I mean, I leave it up to Chief McGrath in terms of what we usually do in timing. What's going to work well?
It, it's for the, for the board, it's relatively a quick ceremony. So again, we, we don't really care. Four, four thirty, five. So the shift, the day shift ends at four. So if you want to do it way earlier and do it around 4:15, some of them could stick around. We'd have another shift in and everyone would be out early. That's up to you guys. We're, we're 24/7, first.
Me too. Typically, I don't get back from work and into Rhythm until 5:15, 5:30.
Again, all up to you guys.
You've got to hear it from us. Looks like the 17th. Working out with the time and let us know.
Yeah, it'd be good. I'd be good with, if Bill can get there for 5:30, I'd be good at 5:30, six.
Yeah.
Then would that be held at the Public Safety Building?
Yes, it would be. Why don't we say 5:30?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The big takeaway I'm hearing though is that Bill McGrath is buying the whole board dinner. I think I heard that loud and clear, so.
That's true. That's absolutely true. At the Gold, the Golden Archers. You all get a Happy Meal.
I didn't know Luciato's was called the Golden Archers.
No, it's not. Now Shake Shack's too expensive for Gallo.
Before I get in trouble, I think we should move on, Mr. Chair.
All right. That's right, you should.
So that being said, chair entertain a motion to approve the 2025 Select Board Meeting Schedule as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Harrington, seconded by Select Board Member Anderson. We'll go to a roll call vote. Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash is a yes. Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So next. Oops, I pushed that one twice. So with the departure of Kevin, we need to fill his slot on the Public Works Building Committee. And the proposed person for that is Mike King. Is there any discussion? Being none, chair entertain a motion to appoint Mike King to the Public Works Building Committee for a term effective immediately and expiring on June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Select Board Member Gallo, seconded by Select Board Member Harrington, do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Botash. Yes. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
My mind is not with it today. Bear with me. That passed five zero. While we're on the topic of Mr. King, which effective today with the agreement, but is effective December 5. He will be our interim town administrator. And we, we have a memorandum of agreement for his 90-day tenure in that position for compensation and duties, which can be renewed for additional 90 if needed. Is there any further discussion on it? Being none, chair entertain a motion to approve the interim town manager employment agreement.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Harrington, seconded by Selectman Anderson. We'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Botash, yes. Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
And Select Board Member Rouse.
Ross, yes.
That passed five zero. So now the next thing is, he needs to share his cell phone number so he can text him between midnight and 3:00 AM with questions and expect responses. All right, Tab Eight. We have some updates on the MBTA communities. We have a letter first of all, from the State Auditor that I would like our clerk to read into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the letter is dated November 27 via electronic and US Mail. The Town of Rhythm Select Board, Day Rhythm Select Board. The Office of the State Auditor's Division of Local Mandates, DLM, has acknowledged receipt of your letter dated October 15, 2024, sent on behalf of the Town of Rhythm, requesting a determination of fiscal impact of the potential mandate under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 29, Section 27(c), with respect to Mass General Law, Chapter 40a, Section 3a, known as MBTA Communities Act. As you may be aware, there are currently pending litigation regarding the MBTA Communities Act between the Office of the Attorney General, AGO, and the Town of Milton before the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, SJC. While the litigation primarily seeks to resolve the question as to whether the AGO has the authority to enforce compliance with the MBTA Communities Acts, the issue of mandatory compliance with law is also before the court. In light of pending litigation, DLM is requesting a waiver of the 60-day timeline under Mass General Law, Chapter 29, Section 27(c) in anticipation of the SJC's ruling on this matter. Please contact our office with any question in regards. Michael Lutet, General Counsel, CC Dejanatally, Director of the DLM, and Sonya Kwan, Senior Legal Counsel of the DLM.
All right. I'm going to ask either Kevin or Mike to now translate that.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask Mike King to provide an update. He actually has a little bit more he can add. He's the one that had a direct conversation today as well with the same individual, so.
All right, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I had a conversation with the Division of Local Mandates, Legal Counsel, and my, my takeaway from that is that the Select Board has the discretion on whether to agree to a waiver of the 60-day determination timeline, which would thereby extend the response window past town meeting or to deny it.
Oh, the pros and cons of, of accepting the waiver and denying.
So town meeting's coming up on December 16. The response window puts it based on the 60 days on December 15, which is a Sunday. So you'd be looking, you know, ideally, the division would be responding on that Friday, the 13th. If the town granted a waiver, that would give, it would mean that the town would not get a response before town meeting. If the town were to deny the waiver, then there is the possibility that the division could provide a response before a town meeting, which could then be passed on to those who are voting.
Chris, any questions?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. And, and I guess this is a, a question for Mike and the other board members through you as well. What would be the negative if we denied the waiver and asked them to do the, get us the response by Friday, the 13th or Monday, the 15th? If we're trying to get a determination and information to the voters, so that the voters can make the best possible decision, is there, is there any negative impact if we, if we deny the waiver and ask them to provide the, the you know, the, the review by that date?
So I, I did speak, when speaking to legal counsel, he said that this is something that they often request. Generally, communities agree to it. They believe that, you know, in their opinion, that it's premature at this time to make a decision. With, with that being said, this is a little bit of a different situation because we are against that town meeting window, which was the, the basis for requesting this determination in the first place.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, my only thoughts was if they, if we deny it, I mean, I just don't think it'll be a very thorough. I mean, I could be wrong, but it's just based on the timeline now where it's at. I don't know what the, I don't know how great the data that they'll provide will be. But I could be wrong. I don't know. I think they're banking on us not, you know, allowing, you know, allowing it. As Mike said, most communities, that's the case, right? I don't know. I don't know what the response will be at if they're asking for the more information because they need, they need to kind of digest it more amongst themselves.
Michelle, any questions?
No questions. I'm just, you know, they ask for the leniency in waiting for the timeline, but we're under a, a decision by 12:31 for compliance. So it's, it's hard to make a decision on this. When there seems not to be the grace eat both for both sides.
Mr. Mr. Chair, through you, would we be able to ask if we allow the, the, if we allow the, the waiver, can we ask the state to push out our time that we're supposed to comply by until we get the response from Milton from the SJC and we get the auditor's report based on us allowing them the, the additional time? I think that's a hard no. To set completely separate elected entity, and I don't see that having any. I don't see, I don't think that they'll look at that as the same as one of their agencies that's holding something up. Just my personal. I don't think they'll open that can of worms.
Sorry, Chris, I didn't know if you had any more.
Thank you.
Jim?
So, so my, my initial reaction when I, when I first read it was to deny it. Because we, we do have a town meeting on the 16th that we need to have some type of information. But I'll, I'll defer to the, to the will of the board.
Bill?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question is what does the legal ramifications of Milton's lawsuit have to do with the information we've requested? One way or another, it's valuable data for us going forward, and it's very valuable to the town. And I don't see what the, I don't see what the, the two have to do with each other. If, if, if the, if they win, that, does that mean the auditor just doesn't have to do work? Or I, I'm confused as to why they don't want to move forward for us.
So part of the the, the suit in the, in the Milton case is whether compliance is mandatory. If compliance isn't mandatory, then it can't be in mandate because the town has the option of whether or not to comply.
Right. It's the whole crux of the case.
Hmm. Correct. But what, again, either, either way, I mean, the, the data that we're asking for could be used in just in normal development of the town in the future. If, even if the mandate's gone, it's out the window, it'd still be good to know what impact it would be to have that. I mean, look at the impact the new development down in downtown is going to have. It would be valuable data, I think. I, I think they should move forward with it. So I, you know, whatever the will of the board is, but I, I think it's information that we could use for the MBTA or not, moving forward with growth with the town.
I, I try to, so they're, they're looking for us to provide the data that we're claiming is the unfunded mandate. It's referring to like the fiscal impact analysis of development?
Yes.
So, so part of the request was, one piece was the, the unfunded mandate. The second piece was to provide a three-year financial impact. Uh, the second piece was to provide a three year financial impact of an unfunded mandate and have that, um, be certified by the State Auditor's Office. So that, that was the second piece of, of the, the request as well here.
All right, that's the piece that I'm referring to. The impact of that, that addition, that many units, for instance.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I personally think, Bill, they're just trying to stall because they don't think they can provide this information by the timeline that we want. So they're using the Milton case to say, hey, give us time to see what happens with the Milton case. Um, I agree with you. That's valuable information. Um, uh, but I think after just listening to this conversation, having time to ponder while we're talking, I still think we should deny it. Uh, I'm gonna vote to deny it, recommend that we deny it and see what they can provide us. And if, you know, maybe Mike can have further conversation, uh, Mr. King can have further conversation with them stating like, we understand this is a very narrow timeline. You know, if you want, if you could provide us with like a summary or, you know, kind of where your heads at, and then go back and give us the full analysis when you're able to, just so we can have additional information um, to bring to the voters. You know, I try not to be on social media a lot these days, but I can tell you that this is a very uh, you know, important topic. Within the, you know, for the Rantham voters, and I think the, the, we've, we've done a good job, in my humble opinion, of providing a lot of information and data. But, you know, anyone can make an argument that our opinions are viewed, are skewed because of, you know, this is how we feel. Factual data from the state auditor, I think, would have a, a big impact. You know, to the voters as well.
I'm with you. I agree.
You know, at first, when I read it, I thought, yeah, let's vote no and deny it. Because they denied our request. But then I thought about it. And I'm thinking, the reason why they're waiting for Milton is I don't think they feel they have a leg to stand on possibly. They didn't vet out this process probably. There could be something that comes out in the Milton case that says this MBTA zoning is bogus. And everybody who has voted their zoning in is stuck with it now. Unless they go back, it's our meeting and reverse it. So we could do it two ways. We could deny it and go with what they give us. Or we can just state that we've requested information. The state has not provided it in the sixty days as originally promised. They're waiting for the Milton case to be determined, which makes us feel there could be no validity in this thing. And it could work to our advantage. So it's sort of devil's advocate there, but I think they're waiting for Milton because there's some holes in this. And if Milton has the right attorney who's smart enough, they're gonna find him all, expose him, and then what happens? That's just my thought.
Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with your sentiments. Um, I don't disagree with them at all. I, you know, I, I think it's very clear, you know, how I feel about this, but I think that those are two separate issues. I think that, in my humble opinion, um, when we're talking to the voters at town meeting, we should be very, uh, as we will be very forthcoming saying, you know, hey, the state wanted, the, we, we, we reached out to the, 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 the mandate, the, the auditor regarding this being an unfunded mandate. They asked us to, you know, push off until the Milton case was determined. Although I personally feel like, um, that's the best move for the town and, and, you know, we can discuss that at town meeting. Um, I, I do think though, having this information, um, isn't gonna hurt us. Um, one way or the other, because Mike drew his analysis and through the information that we went on cable eight with. You know, we had some pretty telling financial impact, uh, data, uh, that we presented to the voters. Now, you know, what's the, is the state really gonna come back and say everything you guys said is wrong? I mean, we have the data to back it up. So I'm just concerned that if we don't have any data, you're gonna have people at town meeting saying, well, look, you know, um, we don't know for sure if this is an unfunded mandate or what the fiscal impact is from the auditor's office, and that may help us or it may hurt us. I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair, through you, Mike, if we deny it, is there any chance that they would not be able to get us that, like, they're held to get us that information by, by the fifteenth?
So, yeah, that, that's the big question, right? Um, so you deny it with the, with the intent of them providing the information in, in the, in the original timeline. You know, just based on my conversations, I'm not entirely convinced that they still, that they would provide that information, that they might have their own legal counsel, um, tell them to, to, to wait it out. Uh, part, and I, and I believe part of the reasoning is they don't want to issue a decision that's contrary to a legal decision by the SJC. Um, and have, and have those two, um, rulings contradict each other.
Sure. I mean, that or, you know, they're not confident that, you know, what they're requiring of towns is gonna look positively to towns, right? So there's a couple of ways of looking at that. Um. I, I, I mean, if you, if we deny it, I, I, I don't, I don't see a a negative in that because then we're putting the onus back on them. If they can't get it to us, we're able to stay in front of the residents. Listen, we, we've tried to get this information. The state's not complying. Um, we're trying to get you as much information as possible. Um, and personally, I think it just doesn't look good for the state to require something of us without giving us the information needed to make the most, you know, again, the best decision for our town. So.
And then that, through you, Mr. Chair, there's another reason why the option to postpone, you know, the option to not vote yes, not vote no, to postpone might be more attractive to some residents. Um, because they don't have all the information they need at the time to make the best informed decision.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just think it's a, uh, 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 allowing them to sit, you know, sit back and wait for an answer from Milton uh, without providing us the data that we've requested, where, you know, now we're going to the town and saying, you know, do you want to move forward this or do you not? And if we have everything we've asked of them to provide to us from the state, um, if they don't provide it to us, you know, it, it's just more, I, I think it's, it's more firepower for the case against the MBTA. I, I, I truly think that we need the information from the auditor's office to, to move forward. The impact is, you know, it's, it's enormous.
So is the board to deny it?
Yes.
All right, we need to make a motion, Kevin.
Yes.
Chair taken motion to deny the request for the waiver in sixty days from the state auditor's office. Motion made by Select Ben Gallo, seconded by Select Board Member Harrington. We do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Gallo.
Yes, Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Bo Tash, yes. Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Kraus.
Kraus, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
All right. So we're gonna deny their request. And we're gonna ask you, Mike, to handle that.
Welcome to the job, Mike.
I'll, I'll draft the response.
Thank you.
So now we have a letter from the Open Space Committee. I would ask our clerk to read it into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the letter is, uh, dated November twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Uh, Dear Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, it has come to the attention of the Open Space Committee that the property at eight sixty five East Street has been selected as a state for the MBTA Community Housing Zoning Change Mandate. The Rantham Master Plan was weighed heavily with residents' desire to retain as much open space and conservation land as possible. To that end, the Open Space Committee has been working to rate and rank properties in the town that should be considered for purchase and protection from development. Those sites include homes currently in Chapter sixty one, as well as other large parcels of land that could potentially go on the market in the future. The East Street property was rated fifty five out of sixty as being one of the most valuable parcels of land in the town of Rantham to retain and protect from development. The following factors were considered in our analysis and score of each property. Watershed, water resources, roadway access, shape factor, size, connections, borders. We also note any potential uses and variables that should be recounted for consideration. Residents have overwhelmingly supported the recent efforts to fund purchase of these parcels through a land account set up by the Community Preservation Act and voted unanimously at town meeting over the past several years. The Open Space Committee has acted in good faith to evaluate the sites in town that are worthwhile to preserve. We are frustrated that this information was not used in determining the sites for the MBTA Community Housing Zoning Change. Regards, Alan Selling on behalf of Open Space Committee.
Basically, they want the town to purchase that land when it goes available. We can keep it for open space. So that's just a, that's a recommendation by Open Space, correct?
Uh, my understanding on it and, and also being, um, on the CPC is that, uh, we put two hundred thousand dollars a year away, uh, for the potential purchase of land that may become available down the road. Uh, if the land becomes available, uh, the money could be utilized for, you know, basic site work and determination of if it's valuable to the town. And then it goes before the Select Board to see if it's something that the town can or can't afford or does or doesn't want. So I don't, uh, they came up with their own rating system. Um, they said it's rated fifty five out of sixty. They came up, they, they designed and developed their rating system and they look at parcels that, um, could be utilized for open space passive recreation. So this particular property is something that they must have looked at. I don't know if that property is in Chapter sixty one or not. I don't know if anyone in the room does or not, but, um, it all depends on who owns it and what they want to utilize it for. Uh, if it's in Chapter sixty one, the town, the town has right of first refusal. Uh, if it's not, then it goes on the market at fair market value, whatever.
So Kevin, let me ask the question again. So they're just requesting that we don't consider that property because it's something that they want to purchase at a later.
Yeah, I think that's an accurate assessment. They've been eyeing that property to acquire at, if, if and when available as, as the open space area. But there's, I mean, there's, there's several parcels in town that you can have the same argument.
They, and I saw the list.
Yeah.
It's bigger than my grandchildren's Christmas list. So.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, too. I'd say respectfully, I, you know, I don't disagree with Mr. Selling, uh, being frustrated, you know, they want this piece of land not to be developed on. And guess what? I don't think that we should be mandated to, to zone the MBTA communities. So let's share the frustration together. You know, like you can't be mad at the planning board because the state's mandating them to do something. The planning board's trying to, you know, with us, uh, you know, working with them. The, the, the town leadership between the Select Board and Planning Board are trying to like pick the worst, the best possible case in a wor, in a bad situation. Um, so although I respectfully, uh, you know, share Mr. Selling's concerns as well as the rest of the, um, Open Space Committee, you know, we're backed into a corner. We're doing the best we can. So I would say then he should not vote.
Yeah.
The communities.
The Mr. Chair just answered, and so Sluckman, um, Harrington's question, yes, uh, this property is in chapter land. Just, uh, I know he had asked that.
So, so we'd have right of first refusal on it down the road anyway.
Yes.
Thank you. Hypothetically, hypothetically, if it were to pass and whomever owns it decided to put it up for sale, uh, they would have to pay back taxes to take it out of Chapter sixty one for five years, is it, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, is that right?
I think it's fine. I could be wrong, but they, so, you know, it, it, there's a lot to it. And, you know, I, I have no idea what the parcel land would be worth, whether we could even
Right.
Possibly afford it.
Pay, afford it, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, how much money do we have in the CP, in, in the, in the CPC? We just spent two hundred grand for the lake, right? So how much money do we have?
That's a different bucket. We have six hundred thousand put away in the, um, open space preservation.
So in today's market, we can buy three acres.
Yeah.
Where?
And it's two hundred K an acre in Rantham.
I mean, I, I, I echo, uh, Select Board Member Gallo's comments. I mean, we love the open space. We want the open space, but we are being put into a corner to make this decision. The planning board, again, with us, tried to come up with the best scenarios. We don't like it. We don't want it. So show up on twelve sixteen and let's come together and make a decision for the town.
Well said.
All right, Jim, you have any to add?
I, I think everyone else, the eloquent job in describing what we should do going forward. So I agree with my other Sluckman.
All right. No need to vote or anything on that, correct?
Nope.
All right. Let's move on.
Uh, do you mind, Mr. Chair? I have a couple of other things I want to mention about the MBTA.
All right, ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I know that we've done a great job, uh, distributing the cable eight video information. Um, I'm wondering if the board thinks it would be worthwhile or would it be overkill? If we put it out to the public to say that we will run it from five thirty to six thirty before the town meeting at the KP Auditorium.
That's a great idea. But it can have it on the stage?
On the screen, yeah, on the stage. See if Cable A can run it right on the screen to give people an opportunity that may not have have watched it. I just want to make sure that the information and the accurate information is out there. I am hearing on social media that people are questioning numbers, questioning information, coming up with scenarios. Most recently this past week, we saw Governor Haley's nonprofit group, one Commonwealth, advertising our town meeting stating that it's reasonably priced housing near public transportation for seniors and for first time homeowners and working class. All misinformation from that nonprofit group. I know that people in town may be sharing other misinformation. I like the opportunity for us to get the actual information that we have spent all year gathering to the residents if they're interested in watching it in that capacity.
Amen. Two questions. Is Select Woman Rose providing popcorn for the viewing? Listen, I love, you guys know what I do for a living. I love watching myself on video. I think it's fantastic. I just don't know if anyone's gonna show up. I'll go early.
You know what, if, but if no one shows up, then okay, no one shows up. If one person or two people show up, then I think that it's a win, right? They, they have the opportunity to see it. I think it goes along with the efforts that we have shown all year that most towns have not done in terms of getting people to talk about this, providing information. And this is just one last opportunity. If you guys think it's a waste of time, I, I just wanted to throw it out there. I thought, you know, can't hurt.
I don't think it's a waste of time at all. I was partly joking, but what, what, what could it hurt? I think we should do it.
If Cable Eight will broadcast it, I think that's a great idea.
All they need to do is provide you a flash drive of it in the, uh, the high school could play it.
Well, they're gonna, Mr. Chair, they'll be there anywhere.
Yes, they should bring a flash drive, but that's all it is. And then maybe we could put it on the billboard at four ninety five.
Mr. Chair, uh, through you, just Amanda, just, uh, you have any issues around, uh, the time? And obviously we scheduled, uh, the auditorium for certain time. Is there anything you're aware of on their schedule that would come, you have a conflict with that request?
Um, there's nothing that I'm aware of. I know for December ninth, they had a conflict, but I'm not sure for the sixteenth, but I can double check.
Okay, so we can just put, we can put that request in just an earlier time slot for us and should be, uh, shouldn't be an issue.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, Amanda, you'll check on that. And then if you let me know, I can, or you can reach out to Liz about running that from five thirty to six thirty?
Yes.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. And then I just have one more thing, Mr. Chair, and then I promise I'll be quiet. I know Rantham Engagement is doing their session on Thursday, their forum. I just want to remind residents that that is separate from elected officials, um, and town administration. So we provided our information on Cable Eight. The information that's shared there is just from residents. I'm sure of the facts that will be presented or the questions that will happen or what's happening that's separate from town administration and elected officials and information related to MBTA.
And also through you, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to mention, uh, I, I have heard on social media, there's a very active member of our planning board uh, that, that seems to be commenting. Uh, that, that seems to be commenting a lot on the MBTA community stuff. You know, people have reached out to me to try to, you know, is that accurate? Is it not accurate? I would try to get that person, you know, I, I've reached out to the chair uh, of the planning board just to make uh, Chairman McKnight aware. Um, that maybe he can have a conversation. Um, I'm not, obviously that red person is a resident or a taxpayer. I just don't like the fact that people know that this other person's on the planning board, so they're sit, they're taking everything that that person is saying. As, you know, factual and blessed by the town leadership and administration. Uh, because I can't personally guarantee that everything that individual's saying, even though they're acting as a resident. Uh, you know, uh, falls in line with what um, the planning board subcommittee believes, this administration believes. Um, you know, to be factual. So I just think that's an important piece as well. Social media is great. If you want to know what your town administration team, your select board team and your uh, planning board committee as a whole. Believe, I would stick to the information that's on that Cable Eight video. Uh, and I'll digress.
Anymore? And Chris, I look forward to your Friday videos. I watch them all the time.
Thanks. At least one person does.
I like them. I, I, so.
Thank you.
There's three likes. There's me, Caitlin, and somebody else. I'm not sure who it is.
Joe Bohtash, Caitlin Gallo, Tommy Gallo. Moving on.
All right. Want to go over to tab nine, special town meeting warrants. So we have one article to move. And that is regarding the purchase of land. The proposed well. And then the other one's being moved by the planning board, I would imagine.
Correct. There's a planning board article, yes, Mr. Chair.
So Article Two is planning board, which is title Article twenty-two. So that's all one article, correct?
Article two in the warrant is, is um, is the planning board article.
Okay. I was confused because it says Article twenty-two.
That's in reference to a certain section, but uh, yeah, it's Article Two.
Okay. All right. I've done enough talking on the uh, and presenting for the month of December. So I'm going to see who would like to do the move forward, the water system land purchase.
I'll move it forward if you want, Mr. Chair.
You're gonna give us six hundred thousand from the uh, from the open space bucket of money towards that one point, one million?
We can present that to the uh, committee.
Anybody have any objection with, with Bill moving that article?
No, but I. Sorry, go ahead, Sluckman Anderson.
No, I, I think Bill will find a job with it.
As would I. I was just gonna ask through you, Mr. Chair, once we settle that. You know, we've never really discussed as a board that number, that one point one seven oh. You know, was that, was that, and maybe Kevin or Mike can speak to this when the time's appropriate, uh, after we. Uh, do we have to vote on Bill moving that article or just, that's done? Okay, so my, my question of concern is I, I know we've talked about this well in West Rentham. I, I know that, you know, the last update we got, they were doing a bunch of testing. Um, the tests were looking good. I, I, the last conversation I had with someone uh, was about us getting some kind of a, an appraisal. Um, but do we know, you know, how confident, like, how do we come up with this number? Uh, are we confident this is a good number? Um, I'd just like some information on. How we're supporting this number of one point one.
Yeah, we, we do have the licensed appraisal. That is the, the number. Um, they want it higher and we wanted to pay lower. Um, they won't accept anything less than this and um, yeah, at the end of the day, the, the data from the um. So, I mean, the, the, the whole, the house on it alone is worth a few hundred thousand. There's no land and, yeah, there's other issues, right? I mean, you, we've broken it all down and, you know, we had Rob, uh, our principal assessor do some analysis. We've done all of our own in-house stuff. Um, that's the number that they're stuck on. Um, I think it's a good deal based on, on what we need. You know, as far as the, the need and what we're getting for controlling um, that amount. Um, but that's the agreed. Minimum price that they'll accept. Um, we've obviously, you know, have negotiated and offered less and. Have tried, but um, they claim there's other off, there's other offers on the table that they have that um. That they would be willing to consider if not. Um, the, the results of the fifteen day twenty, you know, twenty-four hour. Pumping were all very positive. Um, the data that's been provided by environmental partners and all of that work. Um, suggests that this is the only location in West Runtham to site a well. Definitely the only location of the fifty, sixty parcels that they have reviewed. Um, so the end of the day, I think, you know, based on the size of the land, what we're getting and the need, you know, continue to. We have Station Two right there. Um, there's potential to acquire the, the other parcel. Um, that's a different conversation on West Street, um, potentially going to CPC far. Um, and where we could ultimately just expand the well fill protection area. Um, to give a little, even more protection as well as open space. Um, so Mike, I don't, Mike was in those negotiations as well. Um, there's, there's no movement on that number. And um, that's the, that's the bottom number that um, will be accepted.
Yeah, I mean, listen, and that's, that's all fine and well. Um, having done a few negotiations of my own. There's always movement on a number and I'm not suggesting that we go back and try to renegotiate. I'm more just trying to, like I always do, say, you know, what other sized parcels have sold for similar price? Can we show the taxpayers that we've pulled legitimate comps? You know, I'm just trying to understand the process as I happen to, you know, do real estate uh, for a living. That's all. We just, the first time I saw the number was tonight, it was one one seven oh. And this is the first time I'm hearing how we got to that number. You know, how many, and how many, just to confirm, how many acres is this parcel?
Mike, you have the.
It's fifteen acres.
Fifteen was the total on this one, yeah.
And the other one was like much bigger, right? Cause it's fi, it's like fifty acres together, isn't it, between the two?
Uh, I don't think West Street was.
No, I'm just trying to remember when they did that, they're trying to put that development back there behind Station Two. It was broken up into two parcels, obviously. One was fi, I thought it was a total of forty acres or close to forty acres.
Twenty, uh, twenty-two acres.
Was the other one or total?
Uh, the other one. Eleven thirty-nine West Street is twenty-two acre lot.
There you go.
Some wetland, uh, you know, you break that out, that appraisal, you know, was about just under one point six million. Um, you know, at the, at a bare bones minimum of a lot. Price and even you're talking extreme bare bones because you're not getting an acre. Um, of land in West Runtham for a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, you know, you're talking three quarters of a million just on potentially five lots on, um. You know, on fifteen acres of land.
Yeah, depending on how you engineer it though. Where's the road? How much upland is it?
Yeah, some wetland is, you know, some of it is wetland. You know, we, we basically are saying that it's, you know, sixty percent. Good in the, in essentially the appraisal as far as potential use of. Um, that leaves about nine acres of good land in the highest and best use. Um, and the highest and best use was stated in the appraisal as a, as a five single family home subdivision.
Yeah.
You know, cause there, I mean, obviously, look, that was all on the table, right? We're not immune to the fact that there's a good amount of site prep. You know, that will need to happen. There's a significant amount of fill that would have to come in. So there's definitely costs there. I mean, but at the end of the day, nobody's buying that kind of land if they're shovel ready tomorrow in West Runtham for that kind of price, right? So all of that's been accounted for and that's where we came up with the, the best use. It's not the full use of fifteen acres by any means. Cause the, the property isn't um, isn't conducive to that. Um, but you know, that, that's a. Does that, that's where the number, yeah, we have other comps. I mean, that, that's six thirteen West Street, twenty ninety-five West Street. Three fifty-five Chestnut Street. Um, all are not apples to apples, but you know, were certainly considered and looked at. Um, and again, a lot of those were also very heavily wet areas as well.
And those, the math kind of equals that. I think the quick math is like seventy, seventy-three thousand an acre or something, or seventy-five thousand an acre.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's it. Like I said, I just want to make sure we've, we asked the questions.
So four thirty, four thirty South Street was nine point one six acres and it sold for one point two million. But they were able to create, you know, eight, eight lot subdivision out of it.
Right, we've got a lot subdivision there.
Yeah, yeah. You know, at the end of the day, like, I mean, right, negotiations and negotiation done, uh, a number of these. They have a third party licensed appraisal, I mean, that, that's been utilized based on all that's been reviewed. We've done our own due diligence. At the end of the day, um, you know, at the, at the end of the day, the marketing, uh, the, the negotiation on our end isn't that, is. Is somewhat strong, but also, you know, no, I mean, knows the results, he knows where the property is as far as being able to site a, a, a. A well in West, in West Runtham. On, on our cards, we have a, a project that's been denied by planning board, right? We have, you know, there's no guarantee of anything that he was proposing originally. Um, so all of that is leverage, but he also has just as much leverage in that this is our only option if we want to put a well in the west end of town.
That's true. Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm, listen, I'm not saying we're overpaying. I more want to understand how we got to that.
No, absolutely agreed. I, I, I feel comfortable, I know, not to speak for Mike, but I think based on. The number of conversations and, and reviews and discussions we've had that it's, it's a favorable number. I wouldn't pay a penny more than the appraisal, um, and obviously didn't offer the appraisal. So, you know, I, I think. He wanted more than what the appraisal was because he actually objected to the appraisal review and felt like he could have got another. Another lot in there, um, as well as some other things that he felt like wasn't considered. Um, is that fair, Mike? Cause you, you said in on those.
Yeah, I agree with what you've said, Kevin. Uh, that's the synopsis of our conversations.
No, it's good. Through you, Mr. Chair, Mike, I would just say be ready to defend the purchase price at town meeting, uh, because you know. Four, fourteen people are gonna ask.
Yeah, I would suggest that we try to get the neighbors of the, you know. Hundreds of the ones that are on my backyard that, that were opposed to the project as well, under that, um. Yeah, what was coming in that, that, that would want a couple of things is, one, the town's gonna own this and it'll never be developed. Is there a value to that? Sure.
Absolutely.
There's a value to that to the west end of town and, and the Sheldonville neighborhood. Um, on top of that, because you know that'll never be built, the town's gonna need that for well protection and that'll stay. Open space and then the other, you know, the other, so that eliminates potential future development. But also, um, it also addresses a true, real need that we've been talking about in our uh, Water Master Plan. You know, as, as part of this five-year plan, we've been into this now for what, two and a half years? And you know, this is, this has been the site, so you know, nobody wants to spend any money, but at the end of the day, um, I think, I think we're getting. A, a good option. I, I mean, look, we've taken two and a half years on this because the last thing I want to do is buy land to site a well. Uh, we've exhausted every possible avenue, starting with land that the town already owns, which would be my first choice and, and still would it. Um, but it, it just doesn't, it doesn't exist. You got a lot of challenges out there. We got three different watersheds. Um, it's just, it's not as easy as it may seem on the surface as far as like, oh, just pop a well and. Um, there's a number of things, we, you know, we gotta look at it from a DEP permitting standpoint. In areas that we could never get permitted for, you know, we gotta get a withdrawal permit. Um, so there's a lot of other considerations and I, I have every confidence in Mike, uh, being able to back that up.
Yeah, uh, again, I think, I think you make some great points. I agree with you. I just want to make sure that we have our, uh. When we stand in front of the voters and ask them to spend one point one seven dollars. So, Mike. If you can, uh, you know, take what Kevin said and, and add your own flavor to it. I think those are great points. I mean, we need a well in West Runtham, you know, uh, we, we've had this conversation. It's part of our Water Master Plan. Um, you know, and it, there's, there's definitely opportunity or beneficial uh, aspects of us controlling that land, so.
If I could just add to that, I would, I would, I would suggest that we over the next two weeks try to come up with some. Marketing and not have this conversation for the first time at town meeting. So if we can do something similar to what we did. Um, you know, with the last stuff with like an infographics and what, um, you know, I, I think even a lot of the. Education that we did around the uh, debt exclusion related to uh, Tri County uh, was very effective and I, and I would just suggest that. Um, we try to at least get some information out there so that we're not, you know, having this, you know, to the point. Um, Chris is with this is the first time we're hearing about this and why is it so much, any of those things? So I would think if we can work, um, you know, Mike and Amanda and, you know, maybe even if we need to use JGPR and get some. Some of this information out to the public before the sixteenth happens.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
Uh, Kevin, through you, Mr. Chair, and Mike, I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
So, good job.
I have one question. What is the funding source for this?
For now retained earnings. Um, we do have a grant just under a million dollars, uh, about nine hundred and eighty thousand or so, give or take. Um, that came from the FY fourteen. The problem with that grant is that, um. Is that they're going, they're, they're, they're currently approving FY thirteen projects. They're about a year behind. Um, to that point, it, it's gonna all be kind of coming from the same bucket, right? So we could use that, ideally, we would have been able to use that grant to minimize how much we needed to take out of retain earnings now. Which would have been preferred, but the timing isn't going to work out. So that just means that nine hundred and eighty thousand we're gonna have to put, we would put towards probably construction. Or potentially engineering, of which we would have had to take out of retain earnings to cover as well. So. I think it's important to highlight the fact that, you know, that money is there and, uh, but we won't be able to, at this stage, we won't likely be able to use. Certainly won't be able to go in for the approval on that. If there was some way to make it happen before the, you know, the actual closing and payment, that, that has a slim chance. But I think, and Mike, you probably would agree, I think it's pretty fair to say that. That nine eighty is gonna cover, you know, future probably construction, because that'll be something that we're gonna have to bid. And it'll be easier, and it'll just be less we have to pay when we get into constructing the well. Um, so the retained earnings, retained earnings, I think was probably the highest we've seen in years, um. If not ever, our retained earnings are very healthy. Um, you know, our, our, we haven't increased our rates in a number of years. And, uh, you know, we're, we're getting in and be able to kind of plan for these things for, uh, for the capital infrastructure related to the water system. So that's where it would be coming from, Mr. Chair, from the retained earnings.
Yeah, shouldn't that be part of the article or is that, maybe, maybe, maybe going to the voters?
Correct, it'll be part, it'll be, it'll be part of the motion.
Yeah, I think that's through you, Mr., I think this is important to point out, because people are gonna say, are we gonna have to borrow? Is it gonna be a debt exclusion to purchase the land? So the fact that we're not gonna have to do that, I think is.
Yeah, but as you, as you know, we don't ever, we typically don't ever put those in the warrant article itself because, um. The, even the, even the dollar amount often isn't in there because that's in the report to voters and the, the actual. Nothing that's in the warrant is, is technically necessarily, you know, what's approved. It's whatever is in the motion. So the way the motion is crafted is, is what becomes, um, the warrant, you know, is the legally. Document that we, that we're providing, but the motion is gonna be what we're actually bound by. So usually what we'll say in any of these type of things is any available. Michael know the language better than me, but any available funds in the treasury, right? And then when we get to town meeting, that's where we say that's the available funds in the treasury that we're using is free cash or we're using such and such. So I, I agree with you, you know, I'm gonna ask where the money's coming from, but we often don't put that in, in the warrant article anyway, for anything.
Just want to make sure. Any further discussion?
Chair, I'll just add one more thing on that, when you're doing your infographics. I think people are gonna, you know, they're gonna say, okay, well, let's be clear that a million dollars doesn't buy us a well here, right? Let's be clear that the million one one seven oh is just for the land. And then the well is estimated at X number of dollars and, you know, we'll have to borrow, we'll have to do a debt exclusion for that. We're not voting on a debt exclusion tonight, or I'm sorry, at the town meeting. I just think we need to be very clear. About what we're voting on, what the cost is, um, because I think those questions are gonna come up at town meeting.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, this one might actually say from water retained earnings.
It does. And to transfer from water retained earnings to some of one million.
Yeah, so it is in the article. Cause this one, we knew, like, we knew this one was very specific for this item, but like, when we have multiple. Like a lot of times, it won't be listed out like that. You won't see it until the report to voters, but this one, um. Because we knew the grant wasn't, it wasn't gonna be an option. We did put retained earnings right in the article itself.
Any further discussion there? Do we have anything to discuss on Article Two? We already talked about the MBTA. Any questions? All right, being done, let's go over to Article, let's go over to item ten, tab ten. At this time, we actually, we have the clerk read into the record a letter from Faithful Bash. We have the clerk read into the record a letter from Faithful Bash. Who is resigning from the zoning board.
A letter dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Dear Mr. Casavaro. I would like to inform you that I am resigning my, from my position as member of the Rantham Zoning Board of Appeals immediately. As you know, I joined Z B A to give back to this wonderful community. As my wife recently gave birth to another boy, I've decided to spend more time with the family. Being a member of the board has been fantastic and during the past few ye, few years, I have gained a great deal of knowledge about zoning. I want you to know how much I value what you and the other board members do for our town. Sincerely, Faithful B. Faithful Bar.
This time, we should obtain a motion. To accept. With regrets. The resignation of Faithful Bar. From the zoning board of appeals. Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Selectboard Member Rose. Do a roll call vote. Selectboard Member Rose.
Yes.
Selectboard Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes, with regrets.
Selectboard Member Botash, yes, with regrets. Selectboard Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes, with regrets.
And Selectboard Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
All right. That passed five zero. To go over to tab eleven. And, uh. We have a letter to be read into the record from the Solid Waste Committee.
Uh, Solid Waste Recycling Committee, Rantham, Mass. November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Cindy Thompson, Town Clerk, Town of Rantham. Dear Cindy Thompson. Please remove the following members from Rantham Solid Waste Recycling Committee. Maureen Alsonic and Gus Sturgis, both members have been contacted and have verbally resigned from the committee. Sincerely, Karen Ketchum, Member, Rantham Solid Waste Recycling Committee.
Just procedurally, Kevin, can we accept this letter not being from the individuals?
Um.
Doesn't a resignation have to come from the actual party themselves?
Usually it does, yeah. Uh, did they give the, I don't, I don't know, this one particularly gave it to. Yeah, they must have submitted, I don't know the original, they submitted it to, um. To the committee itself and then the committee on behalf of them submitted it. Cause we didn't get anything formal beyond that, right, Amanda?
No, um, Cindy brought this down to our office. This is what she got from the committee. I believe they both verbally told the chair. That they were no longer interested in serving on the committee. So Cindy had. The chair or Karen write up the letter for.
Yeah.
Members.
It is a little. Unorthodox and usually the member themselves will submit a, um. A resi, you know, resignation or a request to be reappointed. Um, not through the body, but maybe, I, maybe they submitted it through the committee itself.
But it says verbal in the letter.
Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable moving forward with it. I think we need a, something from each party.
Yeah, we can request, um, those two individuals to submit something to the board.
What's the will of the board?
I agree, sir.
Resignation denied.
I just don't want any problems down the line. I know both parties, they're both hard workers, served in quite a few different committees. And it's just good to hear from them. I know Gus has been busy. And I know Maureen's house has been failing. I'm sure it's, it's warranted. But I just take out a respect to them. We should hear from them. All right. Over to tab twelve. So we have some license renewals, but I noticed we have some highlighted. And just wanna know what the highlights are.
The highlights are noted and Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, the specific highlights are actual. Licenses that we have not received the applications for.
That is correct. The only update between the time that you guys got that packet and now is that Commonwealth BBQ has submitted. Their renewal paperwork. Um, I've been in contact with Town Pizza. And, um. But that's it. I haven't heard from the other highlighted. Licenses at this time.
So Michael's Deli, The Kitchen at White Barn Farm, Town Pizza, Fair Value Auto Sales. And West Street Service Center haven't submitted paperwork yet. So.
And then just to add, Mr. Chair, those, those deadlines were established for November thirtieth and for the liquor license in particular, it's, that's a statutorily. Defined deadline. Um, the rest of them, you know, we, we impose, but November thirtieth is, is the standard annual renewal every single year.
All right, so. Do we vote this? Less those, like, particular entities? And then. We can revote them again at the sixteenth meeting? If they do their paperwork, if not. Then they close at midnight on the thirty first and wait till our next meeting?
Mr. Chair, that would be my recommendation. I would move the, um, as presented. With the exception of those, uh, items, um, with those ones that have not submitted applications. And, you know, leave that up to you as far as the next agenda. Amanda and I did discuss that today. That that would be an option. If they, if they don't have them in for that, then the license will expire and they'll have to reapply.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, can we just make sure that someone from, uh, Kevin's office reaches out to them? Let them know that their, uh, the paperwork, um, is not, not in compliance.
Yes, we can, we, uh, Amanda, I don't know what, have you done anything other than the notices?
Um, so I've sent emails, I've sent letters, multiple letters to the licensees. I've sent multiple emails, I've called, left messages with those that have available voicemails or phone numbers that are working. Um, I've sent emails to multiple people on there, like different contacts that I have for individual licensees, um. The next step is just to go knock on businesses' doors, pretty much.
I find it strange that one of the people on the list. Who hasn't applied for one of their businesses did their other. Which I find kinda strange. So I don't know if there's any intention. So I just think we need to. Notify them that. They have until the sixteenth or the, the thirteenth. Or the twelfth to submit. Or the next meeting is not until January. What is it, January? Seventh.
And at that point, and at that point, Mr. Chair, it won't be a renewal. They'll have to reapply.
Apply.
This is a new, this is a new stuff. I mean, I, you know, to, to the point, I mean. We've done, it wasn't like we just sent off blind, you know, letters and hoped that they got it. I mean, there's been a lot of due diligence to. Make sure of this. I mean, they're, that, a business that operates and. The establishment you referenced, Mr. Chair, I'm not surprised by, to be frank, um. Annually, there's, there's issues every single year and it's the eleventh hour at best. So I'm not surprised at all. And in fact, you know, that get a little frustrated with the, the level of handholding we have to do and we do it because. We care about our local businesses, but it's, uh, it's exhausting. Um, this isn't anything new and the service that they get. I can assure you does not happen in other communities. Um, but, yeah, we certainly will make another attempt, get that word out, but I just would caution. The board isn't in a position to renew after the end of the calendar. That license is expired. And they'll have to take their chances with applying for a new license.
Right.
And but in the mean, in the meantime, they'd have to be shut down from. The sixth. After the sixteenth?
No.
Their license is valid until December thirty first.
Okay.
If they have a valid license, um, after that, then yes, they would have to close operation.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I would agree with the sentiments of Kevin that there's a lot of handholding going on. And that we do, but bend over backwards for our, our local small businesses. One of the reasons that, you know, we're such a great community here, as frustrated, as frustrating as it is. I like to offer my services. If you're having trouble with, uh, Michael's Deli or The Kitchen at White Barn Farm. I can get ahold of those individuals, um, as needed and light a candle or a fire where one needs to be lit. Just let me know. Someone can email me or text me and let me know that that's needed. I have no issue doing that.
Because I have to assume if they don't apply, that they have no intentions of doing business January one, twenty twenty five.
Uh, yeah, and knowing both of those entities, I would imagine that that is not the case. I think it's to Kevin's point. Uh, just a matter of needing a little T L, a little extra T L C is, you know. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Uh, but my, my services are there, Amanda. Instead of you going and banging on businesses' doors, uh, I can text those people as needed.
Well, the nice thing is to see is that we're gonna renew. The, uh, all alcohol, wine and malt in Carmen Vicula. For La Familia in their open.
Oh, huh. Pack too. They look busy.
All right. So at this time, she retained a motion to approve the renewal of alcohol, Carmen Vicula, entertainment, amusement. In class one, two and three license. The attached list established. Into authorize the use of electronic signatures pending licenser in good standings. With the following offices. Administration Board of Health. Department of Inspections, Police and Fire. Noting that all the ones highlighted in yellow. Michael's Deli, The Kitchen at White Barn Farm, Town Pizza. Fair Value Auto Sales in West Street Service Center. Has until December twelfth to get their paperwork in for us to vote on December sixteenth. Or they will no longer be able to operate. As of midnight. January first, twenty twenty five, we'll have to reply for a new license at that point. That catch up, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Somebody wanna move it?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson. Seconded by. Selectboard Member Gallo. Any further discussion? Being none? We'll go to roll call vote. Selectboard Member Rose.
Yes.
Selectboard Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectboard Member Botash is a yes. Selectboard Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Selectboard Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
All right. Go over to tab thirteen. It's time for your last town administrator's report, Kevin. Then you'll be giving city, city managers' reports.
That's right. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it's, uh, bittersweet, my last, my last meeting and, um. Yeah, uh, we'll, uh, appreciate that. Um, you took my thunder on one of them. I was happy to report, cause that was been another bone of. Contention. In fact, I was looking at that, speaking of which, where I'm headed. Um, I think the renovations for La Familia started the same time as Epic Universal Studios, um. In, uh, Disney, in Orlando, uh, it's been about five and a half years for the same, uh, same project to come online, but it was great.
Through you, Mr. Chair, very intricate operation they have over there at La Familia.
It was great to see, um, I'm, you know, I'm excited. I think that's, uh, they, as we have all been saying, um, we, we really hope, uh, had hoped they opened. And really were looking forward to their opening and, and being part of the community. It's great to see. They, they run. Uh, a great, a great business at their other locations and I think this is a, an outstanding addition. Um, you know, to the, the Rantham community and, and what we have to offer for, uh, for restaurant dining. Um, so that's, that's a great thing and I'm glad to. Glad to see that, um, that was good to happen. Um, just a couple of other quick, uh, updates, um. The, hopefully you guys have had a chance maybe to kinda get out and walk by or at least see some of the, uh, sweat park. Uh, updates. It's really, um, it's really great to see that coming to fruition. Uh, the work is still continuing. Uh, Greg was on a call, um, with the, with the team for the construction oversight and the contractor today. Um, they are gonna continue through the cold weather, uh, continue making progress there. They anticipate getting the cement down, um, for the stairs. Uh, and the remaining pathways that should be happening and down prior to, uh, kinda the full winter here. Um, there's a couple of lights that are non-operational down there that are getting repaired and. Um, things are starting to kinda button in and hopefully the weather will continue to cooperate and, and that can continue to. Kinda come about, um, obviously items that are still remaining. Uh, that won't be able to be happening, um, due to the, the weather coming upon us pretty quickly. Um, will be addressed in early spring, uh, when it's feasible, but I think they'll get the majority in bulk of, of the project, uh, completed and done. Um, these, uh. Said a lot, just, uh, we're working with, we've been in contact and kinda finalizing documents with National Grid. Um, to finalize the easement approval, um, to get the work done, uh, for the National Grid for the, um. Electric vehicle charging stations. And, um, some of the just kinda more paperwork type of stuff that, but that is progressing, um, you know, at this point. Um, it'll be in twenty twenty five when those are installed and, and active and live, but, uh, it shouldn't be that much longer, um. You know, I, I would think, uh, before we can kinda at least see some movement on that, but it's just, it's kind of. It's just a somewhat of a, a process that just takes time to, to happen. Uh, but on our end, we're, we're signing off on where we need to and, and making that happen. So that'd be a good addition. Um, same on the community aggregation. Um, actually Greg had, uh, the public hearing with, uh. Department of Public Utilities, D P U today, um, which was the last step and, uh, they get our plan approved. Um, and they're hoping that that can happen by the end of the calendar year. Um, then early spring, uh, we would be looking to go out to bid for pricing. So if we can get. That plan approved by D P U the end of the calendar year and then early spring. Uh, go out bid, kinda get pricing, see where things are at and, uh, get the community aggregation, um, rolling out. As you recall, that was sort of an open window to, to some degree, depending on how quick. We're sort of at the mercy of D P U and some of those pro, the, the process and timeline, but, um. Yeah, we're definitely on schedule and, and ahead of schedule in a lot of respects to, to get that, uh, community aggregation going and. Uh, that's another, another good thing to see, uh, finalizing. So, uh, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the town administrator, town manager? Being none. Before, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, no questions. Um, but I would like to thank Kevin for all he's done for the town. Um, he's done a tremendous job. And, and I think I mentioned before, you know, I've been in municipal government for over forty years. And, uh, Kevin is by far, uh, the best town manager we've ever had. And, uh, he's done a great job for the community. I wish him well in the future and, uh, hope he stays in touch.
Thank you, Jim. Likewise.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Um, I'll, I'll echo the sentiments of Selectman Anderson. I have not, much younger than Selectman Anderson, by the way, and I have not been in municipal government for that long, but I will say. Kevin is definitely a, a, a definitely highly motivated, captivating leader. Uh, he knows how to motivate and empower his staff. Um, you know, and look at the interim town manager, uh, you know, was a Kevin Hire. Uh, same with our assistant town manager. So I just wanna thank Kevin for his years of service to the community. We, you'll be missed, um, and, uh, yeah, you left a, you left a commu, like I wanna do someday when I'm. Not a selectman anymore. I like to hope that I left the town slightly better than I found it. I think you can look in the mirror with confidence. Saying that you've done just that. So, uh, we appreciate your friendship and your, your, your hard work over these past seven, it's seven years, right? Seven years? And, uh, we're just so excited for you and Bridgette and the kids and, uh, yeah. Definitely don't be a stranger and you never know, some of us might fly down to pay you, uh, uh, un, unannounced visit, so.
You're welcome. Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that.
Right. Hey, Mr. Chair, you know, Kevin, you did great. You did a great job with the town. Uh, I, in my short time in town politics, even though I am probably close to being same age as Jimmy, I just don't. Have that many years of experience. Uh. I, I learned a lot from you. Uh, you're a great teacher. You did a wonderful job. With the town and with your staff and I wish you the best to and your family and, uh. Wish you the best.
Appreciate it. Likewise. Thanks, Bill.
Kevin, I just wanna thank you for all your contributions to Rantham for, um. For everything that you've done for this town during these past seven years. It feels like a blink when I first met you during the search committee. And I feel blessed to be able to be in this role and learn from you, your guidance. And call you my friend. I think that your impact will be forever felt here in Rantham and I thank you for all your contributions. And everything that you've done for all of us. So thank you and wishing you nothing but the best. As you move on to your next chapter. You will be greatly missed, my friend.
Likewise. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that.
I'm gonna ask Greg to move his head for a little bit, cause the picture in his background.
Stunning.
There's an accomplishment that was twenty-five years in the making. Actually, no, fifty years in the making. And you got it done. We tried for fifty years. I've been through three town administrators. In my tenure there. And I'll tell you. You're hands down the best. I ran into so many in my times. In different town halls. Going to the billing department to pull a permit. And finding myself in the town manager's office to say hello and introduce myself. And I tell you, we're the luckiest ones to have you. I know in the next ninety days. I know in the next ninety days, we're gonna have Mike and Mike's gonna take what he's learned from you. He keep things in the right direction. And I wanna thank you, wish you the best to you and Bridget and the boys. I've said it enough in the past. I brought tears. I'm not gonna do it again. We're gonna miss you.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So Brian, did you have anything for us tonight or you just enjoy the entertainment?
No, I was just here, you know, as needed for the land purchase, but you guys, they handled it very well, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
And by the way, positive, positive comments about the Carmen. Except one, don't turn the lights on before the tree, before the official ceremony. Otherwise, kudos. You know, great job, Greg, Amanda, getting that done. It looks beautiful. And Chris, Michelle, Jim and Bill, you were back by popular demand. You'll be back again next year by popular demand for Tuesday night before Christmas.
Even though the chairman threw a little zinger at us, that I had to, I had to respond to tit for tat. He said, I don't know who, who voted you get back in for popular demand. What did you say, Joe? It was, it was a little.
I said, by, by popular demand. You four people aren't popular demand.
Oh, I think you said not sure by who or something like.
Hey, you know something? I look at other committees in town. We can get along. We can have banter. We can agree to disagree. But we all get along and that's the spirit of a strong board. And I appreciate that. We will see you on the sixteenth for the town meeting, seventeenth for the swearing in. Jim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with your permission, motion to adjourn with a salute to Kevin Sweet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion made by Selectman Anderson, seconded by Select Board Member Gallo. Roll call vote. Select Board Member Rose.
Rose, yes.
Select Board Member Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Select Board Member Botash. Yes. Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo's a yes.
All right. Sorry about my mind today. It's been a little bit preoccupied. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you all. Good night. Thanks again. We'll see you.